All in order to meet at the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, October the 7th. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing in letting prayer by Reverend Cleo Wright from the Mount Carmel Christian Church.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, another God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty and merciful Father, in whom we live and move and have our being, we come to you this evening thankful, thankful for our great nation, thankful for those who serve in government and all branches of the government, state, local, and national. And we pray for them that you would assist them in their decisions, grant them wisdom from on high, and help them to adapt an attitude that they would want to make decisions that you would be willing to honor, to approve, and to bless. This we pray in the honor of your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, may be seated. Roll call.
Betron, here. Campbell.
Here.
Gibson, here. Hill.
Here.
Hello.
Lexi.
Here.
Manship, here. Mo.
Here.
And William.
Here. We do have a call. And for the record, Mr. Hopper is attending the meeting virtually. Before we go on, one of the traditions that we've had here for as long as I can remember is what we just did, started our meetings with a pledge of allegiance and a word of prayer. And the individual who's headed up our invocation ministry for thirty-plus years is retiring, and he's no longer going to do that. And talking to some of the pastors in the area, we were recommended an individual named Mark Suter, who is a retired Methodist minister, and he's here tonight. And I'd like just for you to stand from the council, know who you are. Thank you. And he will be coordinating our invocation ministry from here forward. If you have any suggestions for someone who could come and bring in our meetings, please feel free to contact me, and I can get you Mr. Suter's contact information or inform that information on to him myself. So just wanted to introduce him. I like what we do to start our meetings and wanted to see that to continue. All right. All of you should receive copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting in September the 16th. Do you have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Manship. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Betron, aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship, aye. Mo.
Say.
And William.
Aye. Finish or approve of a vote of eight to zero with one extension. Reports, Corporation Council.
Corporation Council has nothing to report.
The thing with the controller at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Any other committee or board reports? We haven't had an RDC meeting since our last meeting, so. Next RDC meeting is tomorrow afternoon. All right, hearing none. This is our opportunity for members of the public that are here tonight to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit per person and a twenty-minute time limit per topic.
Good evening, Mark Webb, 405 Cleo Wright here in Greenwood. Tonight, we ask the common councils, this is talking about the comprehensive plan, as the common council recommends a system of checks and balances as with administering and enforcing the comprehensive plan, including its supporting documents and those who will be affected by its administration and enforcement. As stated in the introduction to the comprehensive plan, page seven of the executive summary, the comprehensive plan is an important tool that allows residents, business owners, and property owners to provide direction on the future of Greenwood. What the plan does not specify is how or whether this interaction will continue after the plan is passed by the common council. To overcome this dilemma, we ask the council to define the comprehensive plan as a living document, one which embraces changes and modifications as conditions or opportunities require. While the city needs a blueprint for the future, that blueprint should be drawn in pencil, not in ink, or changes may be easily incorporated into the plan, providing the best balance between the needs of the city, the residents, business, and property owners. We appreciate the time the council has provided for this discussion and hope the council agrees with us that a plan with such far-reaching social and financial goals must be a living document to strike the best balance for all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
Vince Matthews, 1493 White Court in Greenwood. Good evening. I first of all want to thank you for your service and serving in this capacity. I appreciate that. And also want to thank you for your time and listening to our feedback. I would like to reiterate that we have a group that believes that the proposed comprehensive plan is a good document, but it has one item that we would like to see changed. Now, we believe that the proposed completion of Stop 18 Road between Honey Creek Road and Abbott Road running through Freedom Park needs to be removed from the comprehensive plan. Residents have given feedback opposing the completion of Stop 18 Road through Freedom Park in several forums for more than a year now, which began on September the 12th, 2023, at the community workshop in the Greenwood Public Library. We pointed out the negative impact that its completion will have on safety as well as the environment of the park itself, without any proven need for yet another east-west thoroughfare through the park. Feedback concerning the completion of Stop 18 Road through the park was also given at the planning commission meeting, which was on September the 9th, 2024. Before the vote was taken on the proposed comprehensive plan, after hearing suggestions to remove Stop 18 from the comprehensive plan, it was stated by one of the commissioners that there has been ample opportunity for comments during the review period. What the commissioner failed to point out was the fact that one of the most comments received was against running Stop 18 through the park. Despite the feedback roundabouts that have since been added to both ends of this road extension at High Creek Road and at Abbott Road, which makes the situation even worse. Although we tried to argue that this was not a good idea, they made the situation worse. The process given in the proposed comprehensive plan indicates that it was to ensure that Greenwood residents were directly informing and confirming the plan recommendations. However, our recommendations to remove the completion of Stop 18 through the park do not appear to have been considered despite considerable feedback in supporting rationale. We always start against the supporting rationale, not just our opinions. We understand that there is some existing infrastructure in Freedom Park for Stop 18. We know that there is some infrastructure already in place. However, the city engineers have had over a year now to develop other viable options, and they have referred nothing back. Other options can be imagined. That would have had, that would have less negative impact on the park, yet use some of the existing infrastructure that's there without running the part, the road all the way through the park. It is troubling to have a completion of Stop 18 Road in the comprehensive plan because it states in the purpose section that once adopted, the comprehensive plan will be an official policy guide for Greenwood. It will be used by staff, elected officials, and appointed boards and commissions when reviewing and making decisions about zoning and development policies. So due to these concerns, we would request that the common council amend the proposed comprehensive plan to remove the completion of Stop 18 Road between High Creek Road and Abbott Road running through Freedom Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, James Workman. My address is 1474 White Court, Greenwood, Indiana, 46143. And this time I actually sent my address.
Thank you.
So again, I'm also talking about the comprehensive plan and running Stop 18 through the park. So what I say is, you know, in addition to the comments that Vince just said, you know, is there really a true need to run it through the park? That's my question. Cussing Road is a quarter of a mile to the south of where this would be. April Drive is a quarter of a mile north. So within a half a mile, then you would have three roads that connect back and forth in between. That seems a bit excessive to me. Wouldn't it speak of use of chapstick there? Wouldn't have those other two roads that are only half mile apart? You know, there's a myriad of other options that could accomplish the parking issue that we were stated was one of the reasons they wanted to do that. You know, I'm asking you guys to explore other options. Please take it out of the comprehensive plan so that it's not, as Vince said, it's not stated as the policy going forward. Greenwood Middle School also on Stop 18 there at Abbott Road. They actually do some PE classes, to my understanding, and they run their cross-country practice and music there. I haven't talked to them. I don't know. I would think they were the ones to, if they're going to run a road through there, what they keep doing. So that could actually reduce the patronage of the park instead of increasing it by running the road through. That's another, one of the other stated goals here was to increase patronage. Pickleball, now that's the new end thing, because you guys know, the pickleball courts. You know, that's going to keep attracting more people because the popularity of that sport grows. Players in are using the west end off the Honey Creek Road, and they're going to come through, and they would cut through the parking lot to the pool to get over to the pickleball courts. So you're actually going to increase the traffic through the pool parking lot, which is designed to attract families and kids. Again, increasing the safety risk of that. There's an article that we found in environmental research, this volume 151, November of 2016, that indicates that bicycle walker accidents increase significantly near, near a park where traffic is present, with a ratio of 1.52 for 100,000 population. Now, so Freedom Park attracted 115,000 patrons, not just population, but patrons in 2022. So the statistics would predict something around a minimum of one to two accidents that would occur there by doing that. That's just the road running near it, not through the middle of it. That's not a good thing. We've asked to see research or surveys that indicate the need for this. We have yet to receive that. Again, it's September 9th Planning Commission, the September 16th Common Council, and we did state our concerns on the safety. We were rebutted both of these by saying that there would be a thirty-foot buffer between the road and the park activities. Well, as I started thinking about it, no parking zone last council meeting on Cussing Road.
Give one minute.
Between pond basically in the road. That's roughly thirty feet. I didn't go over and measure. It's close to that. So we're doing no parking there because that thirty feet isn't a good idea. What makes the kids having thirty feet will be a good idea. I know you guys want to keep safety as, you know, one of the public, one of the city's pillars. Please keep doing that. And that's key. And so I'm asking you to please consider removing it from, removing the completion of Stop 18 from the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council about this topic or any other topic that's on the agenda tonight? All right. Orders and resolutions. First, none under notice, but consider first reading, Resolution 2409.
The resolution of the Greenwood Common Council waiving noncompliance of TLP 1175 Collins LLC regarding its failure to timely file its application for deduction from assessed valuation of structures in economic revitalization areas in 2024 paid 2025 compliance with statement of benefits sponsored by Counselor Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Saint John Mr. Mo. Do you have someone here to talk to us about this?
Hi, yeah. This is 1415 Collins, correct?
No.
No? Okay. That's not me then.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Thanks, gentlemen. I'm with CAS and Location Advisors, here to represent the TLP 1175 Collins LLC. What I would like to do is, I was talking to Amy Delich earlier today. She had mentioned that we might be able to suspend the rules for a second hearing to go and get the vote in order to expedite the process a little bit. We have already filed the CF1 compliance form and the Form 322 that is requested to be, those were filed back in August. So I'd like to request that there was the suspension of the rules passed through the second reading this evening, if possible.
All right. Could you explain to us why we need to pass this to begin with?
For the second reading this evening.
Or any of them.
For any of them?
Yeah.
So that way we could, you know, at least assist this. What happened was on this property, it was approved for an abatement. So receive the abatement, you know, it did transfer hands into an out-of-state owner. The out-of-state owner was unaware of the filings. They did give the notice of the filings, and then they reached out to us, which that's kind of what we specialize in, is, you know, making sure people stay compliant on an annual basis with the Form CF1 and the A322s that might be needed. So that's what, you know, we're going to do. And now the 1175 Collins LLC has engaged us ongoing to make sure this doesn't happen again. And then we'd like to go on, get it passed through this evening.
All right. Any questions at this time? All right, thank you. Any discussion on the council concerning Resolution 2409? All right, then roll call, Resolution 2409, first read.
Betron, aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship, aye. Mo.
Aye.
And William.
Aye. Resolution 2409 passes first reading nine to zero. Do I have a motion for suspension for second reading?
So do.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension?
I'd like to know the purpose of why we need to be so expeditious.
Would you like to explain that again?
Yeah, I think primarily just to try to act, like I mentioned, through the process. You know, like I said before, back in August, we did file the CF1 and 322, as I've been talking to Amy Delich, and then also with other members of the treasurer of the auditor, just to make sure that we're trying to get this through as quickly as possible so that way they can get all of their, you know, working with the assessors all just to make sure the calculations correct and not extend this any longer.
All right. Any further discussion or questions?
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules through second reading, Resolution 2409.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi, a seven.
Aye.
Thank you. Manship, aye. Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
And Betron.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through second reading, Resolution 2409, on a vote of seven to two. Have a motion on second reading. So, motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, second reading, Resolution 2409.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Betron, aye. And Campbell.
Aye. Resolution 2409 passes second reading on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2424.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-38 of the Greenwood Municipal Code, designating no parking on the north side of Cussing Road from the intersection of Cussing Road and the Cormac Drive to a point approximately 650 feet, sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion?
Seven.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mo. Any questions? Or Mr. St. John, do you have something you want to say first?
I do not. I'm just here to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, then roll call, first reading, Ordinance 2424.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Betron, aye. Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Ordinance 2424 passes first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2425.
An ordinance amending the 2024 salary ordinance, Common Council Ordinance Number 23-33, to change the classification of the Assistant Airport Manager position in Department of Aviation, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Manship. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, Resolution 2425, first read.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo. Williams.
Aye.
Betron, aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Aye. Resolution 2425 passes first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2425. Ordinance 2426.
An ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2025 budget year.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Aye.
Second by Ms. Betron. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open up for a public hearing. If you are here, wish to speak for or against. Ordinance 2426, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anybody? For or against, or online. Hearing none? Close to public hearing. Any discussion? Ordinance 2426. Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2426, first read.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship, aye. Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Betron, aye. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance 2426 passes first reading nine to zero. Ordinance 2427.
An ordinance spacing salaries of appointed officers and employees, City of Greenwood and City Utilities for the year 2025, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Some. Motion by Mr. Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Saint John Mr. Mo. Any discussion on the council?
I do have some comments here, and these are specific to public safety. As the council appointee to the public safety meeting conferred committee, I have met first season with public safety reps, as well as have several conversations and emails over the last two years. I've also met with the mayor and members of his administration, including both fire and police chiefs on multiple occasions. For the 2025 budget, meeting conferred members, as well as both police and fire chiefs, were pushing for a 9% increase in salaries. Through a variety of meetings, I've advocated and supported the 9% increase, even if it meant making cuts elsewhere. Unfortunately, the meeting conferred committee was unable to deliver on the 9% proposed. And sometimes it comes down to a matter of perspective because there's always a variety of opinions when it comes to what an individual or position should make. I'm disappointed, however, for 6.2% is better than nothing, and I will be voting to support the 2025 salary ordinance. As the council appointee to meet and confer, and as a representative of District 2, I don't want to gamble with public safety. And what I mean by that is, I want to see our public safety departments and personnel running like a fine-tuned, well-oiled machine. And I want our public safety personnel content with their pay and benefits. Basically, what I'm saying is, I want the best of the best, and I believe that's what my constituents deserve. I know all that is easier said than done, especially when it comes to a city our size with such a low tax rate. I do think since 2012, the mayor and with the council's support, has made major improvements and investments in public safety. Just over the last couple of years and going into 2025, the city is spending well over $50 million on the fire department alone, and new hires, new equipment, new trucks, new training facility, and new fire office. I don't feel we are yet where we need to be regarding public safety, but I do think we're moving in the right direction. Since being on a meeting conferred committee, my research has shown me that what seems to be the greatest concern among public safety personnel is salary and its effect on retention and recruitment, meaning are we staying competitive with other cities and towns? To answer this question, I reviewed quite a bit of data, believe we are sure of where we need to be. So how do we resolve this issue? One solution, the one I'm proposing, so to speak, instead of the meeting conferred committee coming every year and asking for 9% or so, one month sum to get our salaries competitive, which is a pretty tall ask. I mean, in turn, asking the mayor to shoot for a minimum of 5%, and that's a minimum of 5% over the next three budget years for public safety, starting with the 2026 budget. Based on the data that was provided by the meeting conferred members, this will get us in the ballpark of where we need to be in comparison to other cities our size going in through 2028. I will also be looking at the data over the next three years that shows Greenwood's public safety turnover and recruitment. This information will show the size of the issue that seems to be the biggest concern. Whenever the city loses a firefighter or police officer, it's quite the process to replace them, and that puts our public safety service at risk. And we need to be proactive in trying to prevent that from happening. There's a lot more detail that goes into these issues, but that is essentially a nutshell by time on the meeting conferred committee. I would additionally just ask all council members to review what I've said and support my minimum 5% solution starting with the 2026 budget. And basically, what I'm saying as representative of District 2, going forward, any more budgets that come before me that have police and fire less than 5%, I will not be supporting that. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to fellow meeting conferred council member, Ms. Petron.
Hi. So again, I also am on the meeting confer, and I have just some of the data that I wanted to bring up, just to make this real. Out of 37 full-time fire departments in the 45-mile radius of us, 22 of them make more annually than what we do, and that consists of 41% of the pay. So when we're looking at other Class II cities even, we're not anywhere being close to a lot of them. And indeed, the only Class I, obviously, they can make it more as well. But there's even some Class III that are killing us when it comes to pay. And this is the concern when we're talking about retention. So the fire department recently went to this program where they're able to hire people who are not fire certified yet, which is great, but what is going to keep them from leaving once they get fully qualified and go to barber school where they can make 20,000 more? So that's, that's the concern that I see in the long term. So how do we recruit and retain our top talent if we want to be the city, you know, the Class I city? How do we do this if we're not putting our focus on, you know, on what matters to these families? Obviously, everybody's struggling financially, right? So we want to make sure that we're, we're doing our best for our people, and that includes both fire and police. But this is what I've talked about today, as far as the price points, that's, that's all fire.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to have a comment or question concerning ordinance 2427? Thank you. Anyone else wish to have a comment or question concerning ordinance twenty four twenty seven? Here in the role call, first reading, ordinance twenty four twenty seven.
Manish.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty four twenty seven passes first reading nine to zero. Ordinance twenty four twenty eight.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the city judge for the year twenty twenty five sponsored by Gibson.
Got a motion? Sir, motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moon. Any discussion? Here in the role call, ordinance twenty four twenty eight, first reading.
No.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Manish.
Aye.
Motion, uh, ordinance twenty four twenty eight is approved on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance twenty four twenty nine.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the common council for the year twenty twenty five sponsored by Gibson.
Got a motion? Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moon. Any discussion? Here in the role call, ordinance twenty four twenty nine.
Williams.
May.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manish.
Aye.
And No.
Aye. Ordinance twenty four twenty nine passes a vote of eight to one, I believe. Mr. Hopper, you voted aye.
I did, yes, sir.
Thank you. Order twenty four thirty.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor for the year twenty twenty five.
Got a motion?
Sir.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
By Mr. Moon. Any discussion? Here in the role call, ordinance twenty four thirty, first reading.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Aye.
Manish.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty four thirty passes a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance twenty four thirty one.
An ordinance fixing the salary of the clerk for the year twenty twenty five sponsored by Gibson.
Got a motion? Motion by Ms. Betron, second.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Here in the role call, ordinance twenty four thirty one.
Campbell.
May.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manish.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Betron.
Aye.
Motion, uh, ordinance twenty four thirty one is approved on a vote of eight to one. Resolution twenty four eleven.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt and approve a comprehensive plan in accordance with the provisions of Indiana Code thirty six, seven, four, five hundred as amended sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to amend the comprehensive plan by removing and deleting the proposed future extension of stop eighteen road through Freedom Park.
All right, we have a motion to amend resolution twenty four eleven. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Betron. Any discussion on amendment?
I think we're all a little versed in this matter, but seeing that we've got Cusack Road from east to west to the south, favorite road has been recently completed on the north side of the park, we've got sufficient east-west connectivity and given the safety concerns that have been more than had to be explained by the local residents, I feel that this extension of stop eighteen road through to Honey Creek is unnecessary.
All right, I believe Mr. Nelson has some information on this topic, so Mr. Nelson.
Yes. Fix the typo first. Uh, I'd be able to share this PowerPoint with our virtual listeners. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mark. Uh, so just, I think we're all familiar as David Blesky said, but um, just to make you familiar with the road that is under discussion. Uh, this is stop eighteen. Can't transfer like that. Okay. W day. Yeah. Actually, I think I. Are we live? Thank you. Uh, but I've highlighted in yellow the path of the road. So some of these are existing roads. Uh, the uh, stop eighteen currently, uh, once you get to the parking lot, the road does end. It is the section in between Brighton Estates uh and the parking lot that would be the stop eighteen extension. Uh, as you can see, it is a a curving road, uh, and you can also see there is some existing infrastructure that I'll get to later in the presentation. Uh, so first, why is it a winding road? Why is it shaped like this? Well, back in nineteen, in my day, nineteen eighty-eight, uh, this was a straight line. There's also a straight line in our two thousand set of comprehensive plan. It's been in our plans uh for a long time, uh, but it was switched to be a winding road. That was due to some of the infrastructure that's already been invested into this park and put into place. Uh, so in twenty twelve, there was an amendment to the comprehensive plan uh that made it more of a winding park road. Uh, this is to improve access to key areas of the park. Uh, there'll be parking lots built off of this road. Uh, the opportunity for more visitors to enjoy the enjoy those access points throughout the park. It's going to also uh slow traffic down. Uh, the curves in the road are going to naturally slow drivers down. Uh, and then, uh, you mentioned the parking areas. Uh, so roads can be designed for safety and enjoyment. Uh, we see this all over the place. Here I have four photos. Uh, these are all of uh stop eighteen. I mean, this is a block and a few of them. Uh, but you can see there's uh ballers uh at at our current uh Freedom Park uh between the trail uh and the roadway. Uh, you can see in yellow, I highlighted that sharp curve there. Uh, that's going to slow drivers down as they enter the park. Freedom Park, the entrance right now currently does have a path that is located off of the roadway. Uh, we haven't had any issues with that. In fact, we have trails, sidewalks, and paths throughout the city of Greenwood uh that run along roads. Uh, and then that thirty-foot buffer that I talked about, uh, you can see I've measured out in beacon about twenty-nine point seven, eight feet. Uh, forgive me, beacon can be uh slightly inaccurate. It's an aerial image uh with parcel lines mapped over it. Uh, but from that structure that's already in place, it's about thirty feet there. Uh, for reference, the uh entrance to Freedom Park, uh, where you see that photo uh in the lower left-hand corner, uh, that that's more like eight feet there. Uh, with this too, uh, it's not anything we've designed yet, but we can add uh ballers, trees, rocks. Uh, you can add raised pedestrian crossings, change in pavement type, you can add speed humps, speed bumps. Uh, you can actually do a choke in the road. Uh, here are some examples of some things we can do to slow the speeds here. Uh, so you have raised pedestrian crossings, you have street trees, uh, you have the uh the road kind of narrowing to to slow down your visual field. Uh, you have traffic circles. Uh, there are many different ways uh that you can have a right-of-way that it is enjoyable for all and accessible to all modes of transportation. One of the uh reasons that this road is important for the park is going to be because it improves access. That top photo, you have someone trying to fish out of a pond. Uh, there's no access to that pond through the park. There's no parking near the pond. Uh, they pull off on the side of the road. Uh, the other part is another photo from uh Freedom Park showing our uh handicap parking. If you want to go to a soccer game right now, you have to trek across the park. Uh, this is gonna just make it more accessible for uh families of strollers, uh elderly, people with limited mobility, uh, et cetera, just making this a more of a regional park for all all those in Greenwood. I did also want to uh provide some examples. We're not the only uh municipality that's proposed something like this. Uh, in Franklin, south of here, you have Providence Park. I've just in yellow gone over uh the different roads that they have running through this park. As you can see, uh, they not only have one, they have multiple roads that run uh north, south, and east, west. There's some photos. Uh, you have uh some of the trail is separated um by trees and landscaping or fencing. Uh, some of the trail is much closer than that thirty feet that our park would have. Uh, some is only only has a a small raised curb. They really don't have any issues. You can see there's families with the strollers I mentioned enjoying enjoying the park and enjoying the trail. Uh, you can see there's a playground there as well. Uh, this is just a a zoomed-in aerial of the park. You can see they have parking lots uh coming off of this road. Uh, this is so that they can access the park throughout the entire park system through these uh this road network. Also, Garfield Park in Indianapolis, Garfield Park has uh the the art center, there's the conservatory, there's a very a large farmer's market. Uh, they do have community pool as well. I believe it's under construction this year, but uh should be open in the future. Uh, they also have uh fields and and pickleball and and tennis. Uh, you can see here, there are roads running throughout the entire uh park as well, surrounded by commercial and residential uses. Um, but I have a couple other photos of it. Uh, you have a biker here on the bridge, uh crossing the bridge next to the road with a a raised uh median or fence, and then you can see there's uh trees in between the trail. They've got some fallen colors there. Uh, so people are enjoying the park. There are roads to the park, uh, multiple roads to the park, and again, they have parking lots off of these roads providing access to the full full park. Uh, Old Park in Cincinnati, uh, a white piece to live uh near this park. We walk there frequently. Uh, we would walk, uh, and there would also be cars in in this park. It connects to two different residential neighborhoods. Go south, it goes residential, and north is also residential. It actually does a circle around the park, and there is street parking. Uh, again, uh, there are our paths, there are sidewalks. And then with this park, uh, entering the park, that you have speed humps. It's kind of hard to show speed home on an image, but the the lower image is a speed home, and it does slow you down when you're entering the park. Uh, that's on really a straightaway that that speed home is on. Uh, this road that we're proposing does curve quite a bit. Uh, here's another picture, just an area of the park. Uh, beautiful park. If you get down to Cincinnati. Uh, Mill Race Park in Columbus also has a road network through it. Uh, again, I I won't park on it too much, but uh this is uh just to show that uh roads are built in parks, they're built safely in parks. And uh that that's part of my presentation. I've also invested quite a lot into this infrastructure. You can see in Brighton Estate, there's a Benham Road uh and existing right-of-way. Uh, you can see that four-way intersection there. Uh, you can see the uh storm structures throughout the park. That's that that top right picture. You can also see the bridge. It's just not a, it wasn't a random bridge in the middle of the park. This is intended uh for vehiculars, uh, access vehicles to drive over the bridge. So there are some uh existing investments. Do you want to comment on some of the comments that were made about this comprehensive plan being a living, breathing document? I cannot agree with that more. Uh, it's something that should be checked out frequently, should be revised and amended uh as we check off items in the plan, as we get new data, uh, as we evolve as a city. Uh, comprehensive plans are not set in stone. They've they've never been set in stone. Uh, so I do agree with that full-heartedly. And there, just because something is in the plan doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be ha- going to happen or going to happen immediately. As I mentioned, this has been in our plans since uh nineteen eighty-eight. Um, so it's been planned for a long time. Uh, it has not been built yet. There has been uh some structures in there and a bridge, but it's not been built yet. Uh, then also many projects that are not in the plan and uh have been built uh since then. So it is a a guiding document, it's a visioning document, but it isn't, it's not a ordinance or a mandate. It is a a a comprehensive guide. It's something for us to reference. It's something for staff to use, for decision-makers to use, and for the public to reference. Another reason why I do think it's important to have this here is uh the park is under uh owned, is owned by the Philadellos of Parks Board, the Parks Commission. Uh, so currently, uh, it is their property. They could put uh roads through through the parkway. Um, I think it's important to show that that road could feasibly be put in the parkway. Uh, that does not need uh council approval or comprehensive plan approval. Um, I would hate to see this road disappear and then for in the future, it to be built for someone to have not known, uh, because they were not able to see that in our comprehensive plan. Uh, same with the right-of-way that's behind Brighton Estates. That's existing right-of-way. Part of the road is already built there. Uh, so I do think that, you know, we do have a duty uh to to show uh what has, what infrastructure's been placed and what could potentially happen with this park. Other than that, I do just want to uh express that Greenwood is committed to prioritizing safety, and uh this road hasn't been uh hasn't been through engineering, hasn't been designed at this time, uh, but that's going to be something that we look into uh as as we eventually get there. We know it's a concern of the community as it is with any road project. Uh, we never want to develop something that we don't believe is going to be safe uh for the people that use it. Uh, but with safety, this is also going to enhance our emergency services, uh, emergency access to key park amenities uh and throughout the park. Uh, our first responders are going to be able to uh respond to injury on the soccer field faster. Uh, they're going to be able to investigate uh that late-night call. Uh, right now, there's a lot of this park that is inaccessible to them. Once they're uh getting out of their vehicles and and pursuing uh on foot or bicycle. Uh, that is all I have to say about this. Uh, yeah, I do, I would say if you choose to uh make a vote now, just like keep the the information I've provided you in mind.
Have any questions for Mr. Nelson?
Actually, do, um, if if you could indulge me for a second.
Yes.
Um, so.
Second.
Mr. Nelson, just if you kind of go back to that first screen, this one, um, the this is kind of showing all the roads that are there now, and we're talking about the southernmost yellow line, you know, horizontal yellow line. That's that would be the extension of stop eighteen, just so I'm clear. And then the road that is um kind of displayed in the in the comprehensive plan is the yellow road that that ventures around. So my question is, how many, how many times does that actually cross over a path? It looks like twice. Is it twice?
It, it only crosses the path once where that bridge is.
Where the bridge is.
So then the new extension would be south of the path the entire way. The bridge goes to the ponds, the bridge goes south.
The bridge, come on, okay.
And so if I go to that last page in my presentation. The bridge there is the one place, it's great separated. You do not have to cross on foot over the road. The road actually goes over the trail, so there, there shouldn't need to be any. Looking both ways here. If you're on a bicycle, you can bike right through, you can walk right through. It would be great separated.
And, and then I guess, I guess my next question is. And this was my understanding, and I think that you basically covered this, but just because it's in the plan doesn't mean that it's on the docket. Actually, I was speaking to a resident yesterday on the phone, and that was one of the things that I brought up was. Just because it's in the comprehensive plan, there are things from our previous comprehensive plans that were never, never completed. Would this be a park insulated kind of road system that they want, would want to do at some point? Or is it something that, once the, or, once it passes, the comprehensive plan passes, this is a full go? Right? Just to relieve some of that, alleviate some of that concern.
Yeah, I, I know of no immediate plans or, or plans to construct this road. It would be something that the parks would likely initiate with future expansions of the, of the park. Well, probably, I don't know, Rob, if you have anything else to add?
I didn't mean to make this. I would do. I just don't know that I've ever heard, I haven't heard of anything, any plans at this point to, to build that road immediately. I know that it'd be a, you know, budgetary kind of item, and they would have to go through all of the. And all the current immediate plans to construct it. And then here, here's one question that, that I wonder if we consider if, are there any opportunities to provide? I know that access to that southern end of the park seems to be kind of an overriding factor. Are there any opportunities to provide road off of Cutscene or more parking off of Cutscene? To access the southernmost part of that, of that park without, you know. Running the road to understand that there's investment. Again, that conversation I had yesterday. The, the city has made investment in infrastructure for this road at this point. But is, I mean, sometimes it makes sense to, to change that plan. And I'm wondering if there's any avenue to do parking in the south to provide that access without accessing it from the east. You know, a neighbor road, basically, or something. Do we, have we looked into that at all?
I, I guess personally, I, I have not looked into that. I know if you go a little bit more to the east where our fire station is. It is proposed that the fire station has two accesses, one for the fire trucks and one goes back to the salt fire. That could potentially be brought north, and that is in the comprehensive plan to actually go north. And it would, it would tie in with. Four-way intersection, gateway, the four-way intersection there. And the parks, department does own the land north of the fire station there. So if a park did expand to north of the fire station, we would have access. That we are providing in our comprehensive plan to go to, again, this existing right way. That, that is stubbed out there. So it would come from the south there. And I'm sure that there would be some type of parking and amenities built out a little bit further east. But not directly south where, where the pond is.
And one last question, and this one's an easy one. The road that extends from Freedom Park to Honey Creek Road actually runs, it connects. To the, the neighborhood there, Brighton Estates, but it actually runs straight behind the neighborhood, is that correct? As it connected through the, their neighborhood roads.
So we talked about where Gateway is for Brighton Estates.
Right, so where the, where you come around and been there and, and that kind of left turn. That I would assume would just extend directly to Cutscene Road, that through right away.
Correct.
Or to Honey Creek, I'm sorry.
So yeah, we have Honey Creek. Eventually, we would want it to reach Honey Creek. We would want it to be built across from any other access points on the west side. We don't want those to be offset. It's a point, you're trying to get from point A to B. The comprehensive plan is not a engineered line showing the exact path. That path could, could be altered, it could shift up, down, it could be rounded, it could be curved. We're just trying to say conceptually, we want to get from here to there. So yes, it would eventually go to Honey Creek.
Yep. I just know if that was the plan, just that, if there's like a right way correctly.
If, if stop eighteen was extended from the west edge of park to Honey Creek. That would be done by a developer when, if they ever decided to develop that farmland for housing.
Correct.
That's not something the city would do.
I got you, I got you.
Yeah, it would likely come with development.
Even though there are no specific plans to construct this extension of stop eighteen road, including in the comprehensive plan. Makes it more likely that the road will be extended because inclusion of the comprehensive plan. Could impose, could be used to impose the requirement of the developer to complete the road.
For developer, yes, it would be likely that when the developer comes to the city, they would be required to put in the infrastructure there. The developer wouldn't be required to put in the park road. That would be the Parks Department, they own the park's land, but it, there'd be multiple pieces. It would be the developer for the land east of where the park, the park ownership is, east of the fire station. And then the, the land that the city owns may be something. That, that's lined out through the Parks Department or, or other ways. I guess, but with that. Mr. Lexi, I do want to make sure that with your motion, there's a motion on the floor. That we're clarifying what the motion is, or is it to. Remove the road from the park portion? And keep the rest of the road where the existing right of way infrastructure already is, is placed south of Brighton Estates? Is it to remove the classification and maybe label it as a local road? Or is it to eliminate the entire stretch all the way to Honey Creek?
It's to eliminate the entire stretch where it doesn't exist now, stop eighteen.
Where it isn't, exists now, is that built infrastructure? Because there is existing right of way that was there before. Any of the houses in Brighton Estates were built with an existing stub road. Is that?
Obviously, you can't remove the stub road.
But the, the right of way is there as well.
Right.
And it can be built in because it is in right of way. Are you suggesting all of that?
Are all other city rights, right of way, included in all the comprehensive plan or just this one?
Not all city rights, right of way, rights of way are included as a classification. Our local roads may not be necessarily referenced in detail, but they still exist.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Nelson?
I have one. Or I guess a combination of, of a question and my own comments. When I grew up on the south side of Indianapolis and the Southport area. We went to Garfield Park a lot for church picnics and our scout troop and all. And if I recall, there are actually two stop lines that are inside the park at Garfield Park. There's one that goes out on the parkway, and there's another one at Raymond and Southeast Street. So that area has had. Foot traffic without trails and things of that nature. I appreciate the time and thought that's gone into you giving this insight. As to other parks and Garfield Park, Columbus and Franklin, they would all be larger than what ours is. And I believe that if we were to move forward, and this has been in the comprehensive plan. And just changed in nineteen eighty-eight for it to be curved instead of straight. So from the time that it was first in there, I'm sorry, in twenty twelve. It was amended to make it a winding area. So it's been in there that long. And I feel like that Mr. Nelson and other employees have gone to a great deal of work to show us that it can be. A safe area if safely designed.
Any other questions, comments?
I do have a couple comments myself. One. I believe that the road through, that's winding through Freedom Park. Would provide access to parts of the park that are now either difficult to access. Or maybe in some cases unaccessible to certain members of our population. As an old person, a grandparent that goes to a lot of grandkids' activities. The shorter I have to walk to get to where I can watch them, the better. And so an access road that would get me closer, give me places to park would be a benefit, I see that. While we may not call it a need, I do believe it provides a service for our citizens that currently is not there. Recently traveled to Hawaii and was quite surprised that on major highways around, around the perimeter of an island. Every so often, you'd run across a speed hump, as they called them, that did dramatically slow down traffic. And those seem to be quite effective. I grew up near Garfield Park, graduated from middle high school and used that part quite often myself as a child. And as a teenager, driving through there, so. Also, on the safety issue, all of us are concerned about safety. And any event that would harm any individual, an adult or a child, would be a tragedy. But we have, as was mentioned earlier, we have all throughout our city. Pedestrian pathways that parallel roads. In even our recent expansion of Warsville Road from Interstate sixty-five all the way to Honey Creek. Is, in many of those places, it's a four-lane divided highway with speed limits of forty, forty-five miles an hour. Somewhere in that neighborhood. And we build nice ten-foot pedestrian pathways right next to the roads. I mean, maybe separated by five or ten feet, not by thirty. You can go down Honey Creek and the subdivisions over there, they went in, were required to put. Walkways around the subdivisions that parallel Honey Creek. And speed limit there is thirty-five miles an hour. So, and, and all of our neighborhoods, we have sidewalks that parallel public roads. We see, I see children playing in the front yards of homes. Just recently, driving through a home or through a subdivision, and there were kids in the front yard playing football. And the football, when I kicked it, it went out into the road. And I stopped, but they also, the kids also stopped and knew better than to run out into the road. Those kind of things I think captain in our city. And so while I am concerned about safety, and like all of us are. I'm not convinced that putting a road next to a pedestrian pathway in and out itself is a safety issue. As long as it's managed properly, there's enough distance, you know, we try our best to control speed. And there'll be more controls on speed in this, with this road through the park than with. In our neighborhoods and in our subdivision. So I don't know what the speed limit will be, but I doubt that it will be the same speed as we have in our neighborhood, so. Because of that, and I think that it would provide a benefit, and I don't see it in and out itself, it's a safety issue. I would have, I'm in favor of the road being included in the comprehensive plan, so. Anybody else wish to say anything?
I would act like a clarification of the amendment in the right of way that you mentioned there. That, that currently exists. And wondering if that is, if, if. To reiterate, it's the road from what's currently at the start of the park to the road that's. Behind Brighton Estates. There is a right of way that currently exists there, but there's no road that runs.
Yeah, there's no road from the parking lot in the, in the park all the way to Honey Creek. But there, but I think if I'm correct, Mr. Lexi, you're proposing that we, we remove all of that.
Where there's no road.
Where there's no road, that we take all of that out of the concrete.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not just the road in the park, but it's all of it?
Right.
Okay.
They've indicated that we have rights within the city that aren't necessarily on the comprehensive plan. There's no rule that says that we have a right of way.
You're not suggesting giving up the right of way, you're suggesting not making it part of the comprehensive.
Correct.
Any other?
I'll pull up the, the page seventy-seven that includes it, just so I don't get it's a clear visual. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
So basically, all of the dotted line, the theory.
Bear with me, I'm using a touchscreen, it can do anything. So you can see it's the orange dotted line. You can see the north-south line, that is where the fire station is, where it would go north. To the existing right way.
Do you have any idea what the approximate distance of that dotted line might be? If it were something similar to that that was actually created?
Sorry to find something on the map whenever it's. Whenever it's here.
Did everybody steer this?
I mean, this right there is about two thousand feet. Part front right, and it's about another thousand feet. And then we take that again in the other thousand four hundred feet.
I'm talking about the part that would actually be within the park itself.
Two thousand.
Right, any other questions for Mr. Nelson? Or any other discussion concerning the amendment to resolution twenty-four eleven?
Point, point three seven miles, if I just do a quick sketch here.
All right, any further discussion on the amendment? And then the roll call on the amendment to resolution twenty-four eleven that would remove. All of the stop eighteen from the comprehensive plan that has not yet been developed.
Gibson?
Name.
Hill?
Aye.
Popper?
Nay.
Lexi?
Aye.
Matt Schip?
Aye.
No?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Nay. Ordinance 2411 is amended on a vote of six to three.
Thank you, Council. I do ask with this amendment, I don't think that there is much more that the city has to add, and I don't think there'd be too much more that the public has to add. I think we've heard a lot of their arguments and their positioning. I would ask that you suspend the rules and proceed with your next, your next motion and send this to our planning commission. Since it's been amended, it will be to go to our planning commission with the report from Council stating the reason why it was amended for them to review.
All right. Before we get to suspension, though, we still have a motion on the floor for first reading. Any further discussion of Resolution 2411 on first reading? And then the roll call, Resolution 2411, first reading.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
And Gibson?
Aye.
Resolution 2411 passes first reading nine to, nine to zero. Now, a motion for suspension through second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Betron, any discussion? And then the roll call, suspension through second reading of Resolution 2411.
Hopper?
Nay.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Nay.
And Hill?
Aye. Rules to suspend it through second reading, Resolution 2411, a vote of seven to two. Do you have a motion on second reading? Motion by Ms. Betron, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? And then the Resolution 2411 as amended. Sorry.
I do, I wanted to hold off because I wanted to make an amendment to goal five under infrastructure. But it looks like you guys are forcing me to do it tonight. I wanted to come up with some language that would be more appropriate than just saying, strike the second paragraph on page 90, which deals with connectivity of neighborhoods, which I'm totally not opposed. But instead of giving the planning department more power, I actually think the council should get a little more power and have a say in when it's appropriate, not appropriate, especially given like Green Valley and Hendricks, where they don't have any sidewalks. We might want to wait until we put sidewalks in there before we connect other neighborhoods to it. So I think the council should actually have a little more say than what we get. So I'd be against giving planning more power to do what they want to do. I always like to keep that with the council because we're the ones elected by the people. So that would be my motion or my amendment. And I would have rather done it in person, which is why I would rather not have this second vote. But you guys already suspended the rules, so that's what we'll do.
All right, hold on, Mr. Nelson's going to bring that up.
Yeah, I can bring up the page. I will say, the correct way is to amend the Unified Development Ordinance. Unified Development Ordinance is, council adopts it, and then the planning commission exercises it to make sure that people are following it. And they're the ones that are responsible for waivers from it. If they, they have delegated secondary approval to the planning staff and planning director, but it is not giving the power by having a comp plan. It's currently in the existing comp plan to encourage connectivity as well. But it would be encouraging this to be in the Unified Development Ordinance that is adopted by the council. That is what staff checks projects by and make sure it is compliant with. So I think the wording there was, I think it's nine.
90, 9-0, yeah. And I don't disagree that the UDO needs adjusted as well. But if we're using this as the document that guides us and for this to say that staff needs more power in the, in the UDO, I think that needs to come out because I actually think it's the council that needs more power. So.
I think our engineering department is hiring Mr. Hopper.
And I had a list of typos and some other clarifications that I was going to ask about, but I'll hold off on that.
Mr. Hopper, you were a part of the student committee and
I know.
you got up and left one of the meetings. That would then be the correct time to share your input on the comprehensive plan. We sent it to you far in advance so they could get into this point. Thank you.
So what section does he start this? So Mr. Hopper, how would you want this reworded?
The easiest way would just be to get rid of that. I mean, the second paragraph, under Strategies 5.1 and 5.2, it talks about evaluating and amending the UDO. So that would probably kind of a happy medium that might cover the language that they're talking about in that second paragraph. But it also lends its way so that maybe it gives more power to planning, maybe it gives more power to the council. We can have that fight over the UDO later. But at least it doesn't specifically say who gets more power or should get more power here on the comprehensive plan.
I guess it's enforcement power, so we are clear on what we are enforcing in Unified Development Ordinance. We'd like to clarify the connectivity. It would give staff and leadership more direction when reviewing development applications and subdivision applications. In 5.1 that you mentioned, common council is one of the implementation leaders. They are the ones that would be adopting any text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. So council is a part of this. The UDO is adopted, and that is what staff uses to enforce regulations. It's not a discretionary document.
So Mr. Hopper, are you making any motion?
I did, I made a motion.
It's difficult to understand you, so.
I made a motion, yes.
Okay. Do you have a motion by Mr. Hopper to amend Resolution 2411? Do you have a second?
What is that specifically?
Take out paragraph two on page 90.
So can you give us the specific language?
Starting at Aldo and ending at Better Connected Greenwood.
We must delete entire second paragraph.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hopper to delete the second paragraph on page 90. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any discussion? And then the roll call on the amendment to Resolution 2411.
Entire paragraph? Mr. Hopper, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Why do you want that eliminated?
Because it talks about giving more power to play. So essentially what this boils down to is planning wants to be able to force like a Green Valley or a Hendricks to have streets added to it. And I don't want that, and that's basically what this power paragraph tells me they want to happen. So I'd like to remove the paragraph so that the council keeps some of that power.
The way and the lane and like, you know, when they want to do that connectivity through the neighborhood that doesn't have sidewalks. This would, yeah, but this would prohibit them from trying to make us do it, to make us have that connectivity or that.
But to be frank, it was already in the comprehensive plan. It was already in the Unified Development Ordinance. It did not stop you guys from putting commitments on the Walker Zone map change that limited connectivities where the dead-end roads dead-ended into a cornfield. Didn't stop you before, so I'm not sure that taking this paragraph out would in the future based on council's previous actions.
Can you give us some thoughts? I'm totally confused.
This is going to change, this doesn't give it any additional power. It just says that it enforces what's already in the UDO. If you really want not to have connectivity, which is contrary to all best practices in engineering, civil engineering, you can change the UDO.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I think the, I think the oral here is with the UDO, right? And I also think that in reading the UDO, it said, it does say words like, it encourages connectivity, does not mandate connectivity, right? And so if we would, and I think back when we were talking about the connectivity through the Walker development, there was some conversation about the fact that it is incumbent upon this body to correct that wording in the UDO if that's not something that we can live with. And so I think there's a, I think Mr. Hopper is rightly saying that we need to be aware and, and understand what the planning body is being directed to do by our ordinance of Uniform Development, the Uniform Development Ordinance. And I think, I think we're crossing wires here. We're saying, he's, this paragraph is saying, look, we need the power to enforce the UDO. And I think really what we want to have happen is we need to amend the UDO to say, look, if a connectivity doesn't make sense, we don't need to connect there, but we need to encourage connectivity, right? And where it makes sense, I think, is what the oral here is. Am I, does that make sense?
It makes sense what you're saying. I do think part of it is just maybe if a neighborhood doesn't want a dead-end road connecting, council likes to appease that they removed by not connecting the road, which goes against really any best practice. We've had connectivity standards since the 1980s, probably before then. So it is confusing when you have a council that passes an ordinance restricting connectivity that violates the Unified Development Ordinance, which encourages and actually prohibits dead-end roads. So I think that's where there is some confusion from staff. That, you know, is confusing why our common council doesn't lean on the advice of engineering and planning. But that's why I did say we are in open position. But you're correct, the Unified Development Ordinance is what would be something that is implemented, that's enforceable. If the development comes to us, we look to make sure it's compliant with the Unified Development Ordinance. The comprehensive plan might encourage or inform us on how we should rewrite or amend our ordinance. And I do believe that future ordinances should encourage there to be connectivity as is standard practice everywhere.
All right. I think there's been enough discussion. The roll call's been called for, and Ms. Manship, it's your opportunity to say yea, nay.
I don't even know what to vote on anymore.
Voting on removing the second paragraph on this page.
Aye.
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Nay.
Gibson?
Nay.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
And Lexi?
Aye.
Resolution 2411 is amended a second time on a vote of six to three. Any further discussion of Resolution 2411 as amended?
I'd just like to say something really fast. I think using the terms of just trying to appease people, I think it would be best represented as representing our constituents.
Roll call, Resolution 2411, second reading.
Tom?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson? Christine? Hill? Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
And Manship?
Aye.
Resolution 2411 passes second reading on a vote of eight to zero with one extension. Resolution 2412.
Resolution of the Greenwood Common Council petition for appeal of relief from property tax levy limitations sponsored by Gibson.
You have a motion? Mr. Lexi, second, or Mr. Moan, second? Second by Ms. Manship. Any discussion, Resolution 2411, 12, I mean? Moan was the first, Ms. Manship the second. Resolution 2412, any discussion? And then the roll call, Resolution 2412, first reading.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Nay.
Anderson?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Resolution 2412 passes first reading, vote of eight to one. Now, under second reading, new business introduction in the ordinance, Resolutions, ordinance 2413, excuse me, ordinance 2432.
An ordinance of, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital expenditures, projects, roads, sidewalks, and trail projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith in all matters related thereto sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Wright?
Good evening. This one and the next one are both related to the proposed general obligation bonds that discussed during the budget presentation. We are looking at multiple items within that, including a couple of fire engines, some dump trucks, a mini excavator, the Smith Valley and Woodman Roundabout Project, continuing our sidewalk repairs project, adding additional pillar grouping at the gun range. So 2432 is the issuance of the bonds and 2433. So twenty-four thirty-two is the issuance of the bonds and twenty-four thirty-three is actually appropriating the money from the bonds for those projects.
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Thank you. Ordinance twenty-four thirty-three.
Ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the, of the city agreement, Indiana General Obligation Bond Series twenty twenty-four sponsored by Gibson.
Comments just made applied to this ordinance as well. Resolution twenty-four thirteen.
A resolution establishing holidays for employees of the city agreement for the year twenty twenty-five.
All right. Miscellaneous business, this is second opportunity for members of the public, this time to address the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, there's a five-minute time limit, uh, per person in the twenty minutes time limit.
Meeting council members, Randy Gooden, eleven fifty-seven, Central Park Boulevard South, Greenwood, Indiana, four six one four three. I come to you tonight to ask for a little bit of help in the fact that since we've lost our beautiful landmark red carpet hat, it has suddenly become an interstate truck stop. There are no signs there that say no parking, but if you drive through there, you will find somewhere between three and six step lines with the trailers parked up there. Why is that a dish? Drive back through there and you check those roads, you will see that they are already severely deteriorated. They are blocking access. That road is a connector between Emerson and May. It also connects to the restaurants, Starbucks, the Waffle House, Taco Bell, and all around from there. So it isn't beating traffic flow. Not simply to noise, ordinance, high pitch, because of where it's located, but it could become a complete time thing. And again, it's deterioration. And it is a nice sword. I'm just wanting to ask if there was anything we could do to prevent no parking signs or police in the area and try and stop this before. We have a truck stop on both sides of the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, for bringing it to our attention. All right, anybody else wish to address the council at this time? All right, council miscellaneous business, I have one thing before we get to the CF one. All of you should have received a copy of our meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five. Did everybody get a copy? That's no, uh, special changes, so, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five. motion by Mr. Lexi, second. Second by Mr. Moan. Um, roll call on the motion to approve the, uh, meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five.
Betron? Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Tom, excuse me, Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-five is approved on vote of nine to zero. And if the clerk could make sure that gets published, I appreciate that. CF one. Any questions or comments, Mr. Hopper?
No sir.
All right, the intent motion to approve Exeter fourteen fifteen columns, RE, Resolution seventeen twenty-six. Find any complaints. Listen, Mr. Lexi, second. By Mr. Moan. Any discussion? And then the roll call on approval of, uh, the CF one.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Hopper?
Oh.
Lexi?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
Approved or found substantial appliance a vote of nine to zero. Any other miscellaneous visits from the council? Any other from the corporation council?
None.
Controller?
Nothing.
Mayor's office? Director, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.